At, uh, out of executive session at seven forty. Alright, so, uh, we reconvene. Next up is visitor citizen forum, well, we know what that is. So pursuant to Texas go, people can talk on the agenda and on public hearings, obviously. So first up is a public hearing scheduled on proposed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget, provide opportunity to comment. Town council may adopt the budget with or without amendment in one rate. Okay. Okay. Uh, Linda, you said, uh, someone, uh-
Eric, Eric may talk for them.
Okay, Eric asked to speak, uh, during the public hearing about the, uh, budget. So Eric, are you there?
I'm, um-
Okay. So Eric Hancock, eight two four nine Tremont Place, Frisco, Texas, seven five oh three four. Where on this budget is the income or expenses for the LLC, which is a limited liability corporation, registered to only one principal person, Mark Vargas, at eight thirty-one Cary Lane called Clearwater Services LLC? Where is that on this budget?
That's not the city, Eric. There's nothing to do with the city. That's my own private, uh, private business.
But that sounds like the water company, so, or maybe that you're laying out some pipes or something for water, and how are we supposed to know, without you talking about it, what exactly that is? Because it could be that you're using Sam the plumber, or the town attorney, or the machine, and we are paying for it by paying Sam things of that day.
Eric, if I were to do any transactions with the city, first of all, they're state law, I'm required to report it under conflict of interest. Number two, the auditor has to report any intercompany transactions where any of us transact with the city. It's also part of the audit report. So I've never done a transaction with the city. That company has nothing to do with anything. That, that, that's nothing to do with the city.
Okay, well, I have an idea about it, and this is a back and forth, and this is what public hearings are for. I have an idea that what maybe-
About the budget, Eric. About the budget.
It's got to do with the budget. Thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars for matory, materials for five water services, three-inch meter at the gate, boring under Garza Steel Conduit, and sixteen hundred feet of water line. That's per Mayor Mark. For, uh, Arzalane, last month, you approved a, uh, plat that you said was just to move boundary lines. It was to get the guy water now. That could be your company, this Clearwater-
Eric, Eric, I don't have anything to do with any transaction. That's, you're, you're not talking about the budget. The budget is our expenses for next year. You're in a budget lines that you think should be different, a budget line for next year.
I'm asking-
I'm talking to plating. Plating is nothing. We approved the plat last month for Dan Flaherty to take his, his properties in four parcels and to move the boundary lines on his four parcels. That's what we approved. That's what Dan did.
He did that so he can get water, and I have video of it where your guys put in for thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, and you never talked about it with the council or MDD, and I have their minutes. Mark, this is a steaming, penetrating pile of dung.
Eric, you don't know what you're talking about. That's right. So do you have any questions about the budget? Do you have any questions about the current budget, which we're gonna adopt? Do you have any questions about particular budget line?
Okay, yes, I do.
Okay, why?
Because it has to do with this LLC, and you misspelled your name-
I'm not relying on the budget. Okay, I'll, I'll move on. End of meeting.
Mark.
Uh, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Woo, Mark, you're gonna get buzzed.
End of meeting. Okay, so next up on the agenda then, we are gonna deal with public hearing. I'm sorry. I make a motion for- We have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Alright, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled on proposed combined public tax rate at forty-five cents, same rate as we had last year. Um, Linda, anyone sign up to speak on that? Okay.
Public hearing, I'm covered.
Eric has a motion to close the public hearing. Matt has second. All those in favor? Thank you. Alright, next up, public hearing scheduled to consider public tax rate regarding the creation of Lakewood Village, uh, pit number one, uh, district for Sanctuary at Sunset Cove. Linda? No one asked to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Matt makes a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, Eric, Mark seconds it. All those in favor? Thank you. Alright, next up, we have a, uh, can only public hearings here in a row. Uh, consent agenda. So all items on the consent agenda should be self-explanatory, will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless we count the number of hearing on the- Oh, sorry, I got confused.
H.
H, okay. Alright, so H is a public hearing, uh, for the M and O pit for Sanctuary at Sunset Cove. Linda? No one signed up to speak for that?
I'd like to close the public hearing.
Eric has a mo-, uh, Eric. That would be Eric Darrell. So Darrell's got the motion to close the public hearing. Eric will have the second. All those in favor? Thank you. Alright, thanks, Andy, for pointing that out. Um, alright, next up is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda should be self-explanatory, will be enacted with one motion. There's no separate, uh, discussion of each item. See, I have the two minutes for the last two meetings. There is an interlocal agreement with Dent County for tax collection. That standard that we do every year. Um, the PSA agreement, this Lakewood Village partners is, is the Todd Sorena group, so they're moving ahead, and, uh, I'm gonna be giving you guys at our next meeting the developer agreement for those guys. So they're, we're gonna, we're gonna be ping-ponging that, but, uh, they don't have an attorney. So we only, we have the only attorney in that game, so that's gonna be Andy. But, uh, that will start, but they've already given us the money for that. We only have the check. We only got the bank account created, so we just have to approve the, the PSA, and it's the standard of regular PSA with developers. Okay, so those are the items there. Uh, Linda, you said Eric wants to speak on the consents?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, Eric, you're back, uh, on the consent agenda.
Yeah, Eric Hancock, eight two four nine Tremont Place, Frisco, seven five oh three four. I would like the council to ask for the minutes from each of the July council meetings to be removed from the consent and then not accepted because they are total garbage and created yet again to disguise corruption. Thank you.
Alright. Very good. I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, Darrell, approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Matt's got the second. All those in favor? Alright, thank you, moving on. Alright. Alright. Fine, good for- Alright, next up, we have, right, creation, consideration of resolution authorizing creation of pit number one, Sanctuary at Sunset Cove. I think everybody knows what this is. Um- Any questions? And then any questions about this?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the creation of the Lakewood Village Public Improvement District number one at Sanctuary at Sunset Cove.
Okay, we have the motion. Matt's got the second. All those in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have consideration of resolution authorizing creation of the Lakewood Village M and O pit for the Sanctuary at Sunset Cove.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the creation of the Lakewood Village Operation and Maintenance Public Improvement District number one at Sanctuary at Sunset Cove.
I'll second. Alright, Matt's got the second. All those in favor? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, next up, uh, consideration of resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the ESCO agreement relating to the dissolution petitions and resolving matters there too relating to the district, so.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to e- execute an ESCO agreement related to certain dissolution petitions resolving other matters related there too.
Alright, I have the motion. Eric's got the second. All those in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, next up. Alright, next up, we have consideration of development agreement with Sanctuary Texas LLC. Okay, so a couple of things here. So on the, uh, on the developer agreement, again, if, assuming Little Elm does what, uh, we expect them to do, then the developer agreement will be amended at our next meeting to, uh, include those additional six acres that are subject to Little Elm action. Uh, so we'll be coming back to the, to the developer agreement. Uh, I wanna add some language on our next round to deal with solid waste. That's not in the developer agreement, but I think we, we wanna do the solid waste. So I was going to, um, ask Andy, uh, can we do, how do we do that? Just, just make it, can the developer make the citizens use our solid waste company? If it's in the development agreement? Can-
Well, it's a, there, yeah, because we have the sewer and the lock, so in order for the, be provided sewer and water, it would be provided by the town, and when he builds the lock, we can make sure that there's a path.
No, I'm talking about solid waste.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Garbage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Garbage. Uh, well, if the developer signs the agreement that says Lakewood Village provide water, sewer, and garbage, is that binding the end user?
Uh... That's what we're meant to make, because it may be a covenant of the rest of the land.
Okay, so if we make it with the deed restriction.
For sure, for the deed restriction, yeah.
Okay, then that's, that's part of the last part of the development agreement. Okay. Alright, and then, um, so we're going to, in the, uh, developer agreement, we're gonna make sure that the maps are consistent. Um, like now, the concept plan, everything is only over sixty-four acres. But we're gonna come back to that. And I know that there is, um, there is, uh, some language that we need to put in there to make sure that, um, everybody does what they're supposed to do. Um, uh, okay. Um- Alright, so I think everybody understands developer agreement. It's, uh, everything looks pretty good. It's, uh, consistent with what we, what we've dealt with before, so I don't see any surprises in there. Mary did a lot of the pit language came from Mary Petty. There's a lot of pit stuff in there, you know, all the mechanism of the giant pit. So really, our parameters, it's only a handful of parameters for us that we're, we're involved in. Um- Okay?
Okay, I make a motion to conditionally approve the development agreement and conditionally make the agreement effective only if the town of Little Elm on September seventh, twenty twenty-one, by majority vote of the Little Elm City Council at its public meeting, number one, forever terminates the development agreement between Little Elm and the Sanctuary Texas LLC. Number two, forever grant approximately six acres in the Sanctuary Development, defined as six acre portions currently claimed by Little Elm to the town of Lakewood Village. And we wanna add this language to the development agreement and the ILA.
Okay, so I would like to clarify on the second condition, if the six acres is, is extraterritorial restriction.
E, ETJ. So we have a motion to conditionally approve the developer agreement, subject to the conditions that Little Elm at their September seventh meeting, uh, turns over the six acres of ETJ, releases it to Lakewood Village, and dissolves the, uh, developer agreement they have with Sanctuary, preceding developer agreement. I'll second that motion. Alright, so Matt has the second, and all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Alright, so the developer agreement is approved. Alright, next up, consideration of interlocal agreement for fire EMS and police for pit district number one. Okay, so as we all know, Little Elm, um, would like to, well, they provide fire EMS service for Lakewood Village, they're going to provide the same, uh, over there. And they requested the ability to provide police protection. Um, I've looked at the numbers that Little Elm came up with, and they're, they seem reasonable based on our looking at, uh, what the costs are for sheriff's deputy, and the cost of the sheriff's deputy, the vehicle, and their equipment. Uh, the numbers seem to be, uh, very reasonable. So I think, you know, even though it's not out of money, it's pit money that would be spent to do this, we do have, I think, some responsibility to, uh, to look after those people. They're in our ETJ, uh, but just to be clear, this has nothing, the Lakewood Village doesn't pay anything. We don't pay one nickel, alright? This is strictly the pit that's paying this, and none of this district stuff, none of this, uh, especially, none of the police action is inside of Lakewood Village. It has nothing to do with Lakewood Village. This is only the portions outside of Lakewood Village and inside of this district. That's the only place the police ILA is, is in force. Okay, everybody understand that? So the police aren't coming across the street. Okay? And so in the ILAs, what, one of the things in the ILAs that you all have, it has the wrong maps in them. The maps in the back, exhibits A and B of the ILAs, show the sixty-four acres. They don't show the six acres that Little Elm is to release to Lakewood Village. So I'm gonna put the six acre maps in there. It was just they were reversed. So every, the ILAs, we're gonna prove it, have the six acre map, exhibit A and B instead of the sixty-four acre maps. Okay, everybody understands that? Okay? Darrell?
I make a motion to approve the amended interlocal agreement to include this.
Oh, yeah, say that again, right? Yeah, say that again, right? We're gonna conditionally approve the ILAs.
Okay, that's, okay, I make a motion to conditionally approve the ILAs for fire EMS and police for Public Improvement District number one, uh, at the Texas Sanctuary LLC.
Subject to?
So, these two items begin?
Yeah.
Subject to the fact that the Little Elm City Council at its, at its public meeting on September seventh, twenty twenty-one, forever terminates the development agreement between Little Elm and Sanctuary Texas LLC. And number two, forever grant approximately six acres in the Sanctuary Development, defined as the six acre, acre portions currently claimed by Little Elm to the town of Lakewood Village.
Okay, so we have a motion to conditionally approve the ILAs, subject to Little Elm at their September seventh meeting, uh, dissolving the, uh, Sanctuary Development Agreement and giving the six acres in the ETJ and releasing them to Lakewood Village. I have a motion. Eric's got the second. All those in favor? Okay, very good, thank you. Good? Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have, uh, discussion of concrete road project. Okay, so, um, kind of what's going on with roads is, uh, at this point, Ed Bell's walked off the job. Ed Bell has not been around. They're doing other things. So they're not watering, they're not doing the punch list, they're not laying sod. Uh, all the inlets still have the hay bales around them, all the silt fences are still up. None of the inlets have been graded right. They have, they've done almost nothing on the punch list, and they're, they're gone. So, um, we're meeting with them next week. I've talked to Kimberly Horn, and, um, they're baffled. They've never had a contractor just bail out and walk off the job. So the fact that Ed Bell's walked away-
Don't we start another payment for me too?
We started about three hundred thousand dollars, um, in, under the contract, but right now, there is dispute over a change order. You know, when we did the change order to remove all the topsoil purchased, that was about a hundred thousand dollar change order, and instead of giving us credit for a hundred thousand, Ed Bell wants us to pay sixty thousand. So, um, Ed Bell's come up with a couple of really bizarre change orders, and basically, they're just trying to get back the money that they lost on stow, when they had to tear out a lot of stuff they did and broke all the concrete. So they're trying to basically get money from us for their screw-ups, where they screwed up the road. And we're not doing it. Kimberly Horn has recommended rejection of all of their bogus change orders, and, uh, so they will not, they will not approve them. And so at this point, they're not recommending we give them any money. And we have a meeting next week, I believe, with them to sit down. Um, what's ironic, it really hacked me off, was that I got in email exchange where they were talking the land plan about putting sod over here, where it went in the staging area, but they haven't done the sod on the guy's yard at the corner of Melody and High Ridge, where we put the road through his yard. We put a bypass road through his yard, his side yard, to, to bail these guys out and cut a month off the schedule for Ed Bell. And these ungrateful guys didn't sod his yard. Instead, they're talking the land plan about sod in the staging area. And this guy's a great guy. They were hoed. They had no plan on how to get in that High Ridge intersection, because they had to keep both lanes open. That was in the contract. They had no clue how to do that. I bailed them out. I came to them and said, "I'll talk to the owner. I'll let you put forty feet of road in the guy's property. If you agree to take it out and sod it and make it better than it was." And these guys have walked off the job. They did half of it, and now they're concerned about land plan. So, um, they haven't done any of the inlets. If you look at every one of the inlets in town, none of them are finished. They all have the hay bales around.
Which is responsible for the street signs.
Street signs are on us. Uh, so I, I, I told them to get back on the job, and they've blown me off. So, um, as far as I know, I don't know if the sod that they put down near U Serena, are they watering it again? Because I don't think they are.
I mean, if they're running more.
Okay, because one thing I did, just to check it, I took where they're getting water out of Fire Hydrant, and I tied the hose in a knot around the top of Hydrant. I put it in a knot, just to see if anybody was using the Hydrant. It's still in a knot. So they haven't been back since I've been back for vacation. They haven't showed up in town. So, uh, I don't know. We, we've got the money. I just don't know what's gonna happen at this stage, but, um, right now, Kimberly Horn is recommending that we don't do anything. That we, they're, they're looking at the contract now. Andy's talked about it. Um, you know, it's difficult to go against somebody's vibe. You gotta really dot your i's, just like any other kind of legal action. You gotta make sure you're bulletproof and you followed every procedural step. And I'm looking at the contract now to see exactly, it's the standard, apparently, it's the standard COB construction thing. There's, I don't know whether it's binding arbitration in there. I don't know what's in there. I haven't gone through it, but, um, Kimberly Horn is stubborn. They've never had anybody get to this point, according to them, their experience, our engineers. They've never had it reach this level of, Ed Bell's not even responding to Kimberly Horn. So, um-
But we got a meeting next week, Linda.
We got a meeting next week. We'll see. We'll see if they show up.
Did they set it or did you?
We set it, uh, we've been trying to set it for them because, you know, just to sit them across and say, "What are you doing? Where are you? What's going on?" And, um, so it was set for, I think, next week, was, there were some vacations between different people and, um, but it's disappointing. The good thing for us is the road is good. The road is good, just the drainage is wrong, the inlets are wrong, the silt fences are wrong, the sod is wrong, so all the peripherals are wrong. Uh, but the road itself is actually good.
Oh, and they're not complete. The silt fences haven't been removed?
Well, we know the grading is wrong in the bargains, because all the inlets, the sod's higher than the inlet. So they needed to lift the sod back, you know? You, you can't, you can't grade the dirt to be even with the inlet and then put sod on top of it. Now the sod's higher than the inlet, so it's, it's not grading right. And most of them still have the hay bales around them, which they have to take out. Once you put the sod in, there's no reason to have the hay bales, because there's no erosion. That's to make sure that the dirt doesn't go in the, in the drainpipe. So those should have been gone once-
They sawed it in and they left the hay bale?
They sawed it and they left the hay there, yeah. Those things are still there. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just, just lackadaisical. They've moved off. They've, they've got other jobs, and they're more important than us, and they're gonna go make money somewhere else. So, um, it's disappointing. It's really disappointing. I thought we had a pretty good relationship with them. You know, just that you guys, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking with choir here, but they jacked up the very first road with the pry bars, busted all the concrete on the first road. They had ninety-three panels that they marked off that had to be demolished. They did about ten, and I told them just to saw off a foot. We would accept ten feet and twelve feet. We would accept that. That's what they ended up doing, so they didn't have to demo and re-pour eighty-three of the panels. We could have said, "No, we don't accept that. We want eleven-foot panels," and made them demo the entire street end to end report. But we didn't do that. Okay? I came up with a solution for them to go around the corner and get up there. I came up with other fixes for them when they got hung up. Okay? And so we've been over backwards to be partners in this, and now they've bailed on us. They've walked out on us, and, you know, it just, it annoys the crap out of me, as you can tell, when somebody treats us like dirt because we're small. And I think we went above and beyond with all their screw-ups that we accommodated them. We were very accommodating on all their manufacturing screw-ups. And they weren't mistakes, they were process errors. I mean, there's no excuse for rebar just sticking out the top of the concrete. And we have photos of that, where they just, just, they poured it anyway. The rebar was sticking out of the top. Six inches of concrete, it's supposed to be three inches in the middle, and it's sticking out the top, and they poured it anyway. Just, just shot it. Okay? So anyway, that's kind of where we're at on the roads. Um, we'll see what's gonna happen. Any questions, anybody?
Can you, what happens if we just work on some of the punch list items? I mean, there's a few on there. It's low, I mean, how much of product or, what, what percentage of the product is included?
Like ninety-five percent. They've been given, they've been given the, what is it called? Like substantial completion notice? It's down to the punch list. Here's your eighty-five items to do. That's all that's left, is the eighty-five items on the list, and they've walked away. So, uh, yeah, so kind of over, and then those requirements, if they help, then eventually use the money for a subsequent contract.
Yeah, I, I guess for your time, some of the items are, it's later. I mean, go, go do a little re-sod, you pull sod back, you'll, or eighty-two. Other than buying a bunch of sod, I mean, we're not out of pocket a lot, but I didn't know what kind of, like, start, okay, you didn't complete this, now that's another plus on our column, right? It's just better.
Yeah, so, but still, I don't know what's gonna happen at the meeting. Um, we probably, we probably just, maybe, uh, have, have us talk about it, maybe after the meeting with the non-core, there's going to be some strategy involved.
Okay. Because, you know, one of the unwritten, so one of the problems we're having with these change orders is they, they made up a bogus change order to try and get back some money. Well, what we didn't put in there was, when you screwed up stow and destroyed it, and we had to come back with the new solution, we got hit with about twenty thousand dollars of engineering costs from Kimberly Horn. They had to come out and walk the street, they had to be there going down the street with us, showing all the broken, you were there, Serena, marking all the panels, they had to approve the solution, they had to approve the, the new submittals, they had to, there's a bunch of new stuff that they have to do. We got billed for that. Food Row had to come back out and redo the testing. We're twenty-five thousand dollars over our testing budget because of Ed Bell. Strictly because the Ed Bell screw-ups were over budget on every item. We didn't put that in the change order. You know, I was willing to just say, "Look, just, you know, we'll see how this works out." But now they're trying to get tiki-tack, so, you know, we'll see what happens, because I'm about to write my own change orders now, and we're gonna add up all the extra costs we incurred because of their foul ups, rather than them claiming that, you know, we had to move more dirt. That's not how the contract reads. So their change order is totally bogus. It is, has nothing to do with the way that the, the contract is written. So that's why Kimberly Horn is saying, "No, that's not a change order." But anyway, I'm annoyed, as you can tell, frustrated. We'll see what happens next week. Darrell, hopefully you'll be there? So, um-
Just, I want to hear what they say.
Great. Okay, alright. Thank you guys very much, uh, Andy will keep you, will keep you in tune on how this plays out. Alright, next up is consideration of the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. Okay, a couple of things on this. I did not change anything from last time. Um, to be, uh, really clear about this, I think the budget is pretty good as far as our operations go, but, but the odds on this budget actually representing the end of the year, a year from now, is like zero. Because our fiscal year that this budget is looking at ends in about fourteen months. Okay, so basically, if we're looking at anything happens in the next fourteen months is what we're looking at here. Well, we could have, instead of having five houses, five building permits, we could have ten times that amount in the next fourteen months, right? I mean, we could end up with, you know, half a million dollars in tap fees rather than eight thousand. So, you know, the scale, you know, that we could end up- So, you know, the scale, you know, that we could end up with is enormous. The good news is, it's kind of all upside. It's all big on the up. It, it's not gonna be the electricity for this building, Linda's salary, you know, town maintenance, the mowing. All that stuff is real good. I mean, I, I'm a little confident in our kind of operating numbers. But, um, you know, if, if we've gotta put the well in, then I'm gonna come back to you guys and say, "Look, you know, six months from now, we might be talking about borrowing four million dollars to put in the sewer plant and the water plant and the, you know, that, that could be happening, depending upon how this stuff shakes out. Some of the CapEx could be there, and the, uh, you know, we got two hundred and forty, two, two forty, two thirty-eight? What do we got coming from the government? Two thirty-eight, two? Two thirty-eight or so, right? So part of the Save America infrastructure, we've got two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that's coming to us for infrastructure. That may, it's coming in two payments. We might get one before September thirtieth. That'll be this year. We might get both next year. I didn't even put it in this budget because I don't know what we're gonna get. But it's not even in there. Okay, but if it, if it shows up in October and it shows up next June, we're gonna get all of it, right? So there's about a ninety-five percent chance, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment later down the road. Once we get all the infrastructure, we know the timing on that stuff. So, but I feel confident in the property tax numbers, the bottom numbers are all fixed, those are all set, how the operations, okay? But, um, you know, this is welcome to Lakewood Village, right? We could triple our size in two years. You know, that's just who we are. So does anybody have any question about lines? Okay. Alright, so does anybody have any, uh, any really question about any of the lines? Um, uh, so I put a placeholder in there. We'll come back and revisit Linda's salary at the end of the, end of the year when we do that. Um, how do we do that? That's, you're fiscal, right, Linda? I get confused on that. Yeah, so we'll do that next month. We'll have a special public executive session, and we'll, we'll hash that out. Um, Andy, do you have anything to add? Anything? Okay, um.
The line that we're, so then we would, uh, MDD.
I, yes, that's correct. And Linda Low is, uh, is gonna, is gonna talk to us. Um, the MDD has, uh, Linda, did you guys, oh, I'll assume that. Okay, so we don't have the budget on here, but, um, next month, we're gonna have to approve the MDD budget. Okay, Matt? Hey, Matt? So Linda, why don't you fill us in?
Okay, so the MDD board met, and I know Mayor, you and I talked about the MDD board taking over the park, adding, you know, whatever it is it needs, whether it's, uh, whether it's a lodge or the fixing of it, and remove it from the city side and moving it to the MDD. So we added that line item to the MDD. Um, we discussed the, um, the Boy Scouts, uh, water system. We're not sure if we're gonna get paid for that.